Plan the regions to the five United States of America. And to the government for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, would you like to do a prayer?
Sure, if ever one would please bow their heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just pray that you watch over this world we live in, this nation we live in, the community we live in. As we continue to see turmoil in our political arena, as we continue to see turmoil in the health of people all around us with the pandemic, I just pray that you watch over the activities associated with that and then watch over also the activities of our city as we consider the business at hand tonight, that we can do the business in a manner that is befitting of you, in your name of prayer. Amen.
Okay, on to the approval of the minutes for the October 30th and November 2nd meeting.
Motion approved and suspended reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 A goal, same sign. Okay, that motion is carried. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, or additions I should say?
I did add one under 10A, the 2021 Visitor's Guide.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented, including 10A, 2021 Visitor's Guide.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, we're gonna move on to the engineers' report.
Nancy, this is Jared with more engineering. I hope everybody can hear me. I don't have any approvals for tonight's meeting. So he's got my short report and then just some additional detail in the email. You recall, we had, as a city, we had Bexel do that patch work on 11. The intent is to special assess that the expedition of state area. So that those properties are paid for that work. Bexel did that. We still have to pay them. I have not seen their invoice yet, but when it does come, I anticipate that it'll be within that seventeen, eighteen thousand range.
Nineteen. Jared.
Jared.
You already looked at. Sorry.
Monty says nineteen.
Nineteen five.
Nineteen five?
Yep.
If you'd like me to look at it, I can. The only variable, I think I told you guys this before, could have been the number of tons of asphalt they used. It was an estimate. It was what was needed to level the areas around the manhole. And he estimated forty-five tons. So if that went up, they needed an extra dump truck load or whatever. It's probably reasonable, but I have not seen the invoice.
Sorry about that. It was fifty-seven point four nine tons.
Okay. That means that they use a dump truck load, that's about what asphalt tons would fit in a hand and a axle. So if it looks good, if, I mean, if the work, the construction work does good, I would be okay with that cost. If it took fifty-seven tons to do that, that work out there. And when we did the, when we had the developer request that it be special assessed to their property, we had them request, I think it was approximately twenty thousand dollars. Those costs should be paid by the city and then spread out across those lots. Over the assessment committee determined big benefit. So I don't know if that's part of your bills this month, or if it's on the next one. I'm not sure, but I haven't seen it.
It's in the list for tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion or, okay, move on?
No, go ahead.
Okay, great. So that kind of wraps that up. Besides some miscellaneous paperwork we gotta do with the assessment stuff in 2021. Other than that, you know, we'll have some water service and play. Keep bringing this up, just to remind everybody, and I know we've had some discussion on appropriate, so who's paying for it. I cannot remember if we decided already that that's a city expense and that I shouldn't keep bringing that up.
No.
No, it has not been.
Okay, then I'm gonna leave it on here just for the sole purpose of, you know, I, you know, sometimes in winter, if you think that we need to visit with those homeowners, we should do that before they show up to do the construction work, those things.
I agree.
Okay, right. I'll just leave it on my list here. Otherwise, at the water tank site, there's two property owners up there, and the reason I was kind of dragging my feet was because we were looking at easements that was running across that property to see if we could use it. And we did a survey just this week, and we can't use it, so we need to do one extra easement up there, and when we met with them, they were fine with that, but just trying to be not wasteful. I wanted to look and see if we could use one that was up there. We can't, so. My guy is finishing that. Really no approval. It's just kind of a choice up there. We have to write a new easement description, which will follow the property line, and they were well aware of that, met with them, so. I'll have a full easement description to send up, and then the city and Pat can finish the property acquisition, and then we just sit wait. That'll kind of conclude everything more engineering is doing, until we decide to kind of pull the trigger on doing things. So I should finish, God willing, I should finish that this week. Same things have happened, I guess. Again, no real decision things, just a few updates. I have not been to Hazen in a little while. Don't think it's the best way to do business with, you know, me as your engineer, not coming out to these meetings, but with everything going on right now, my company's trying to encourage us to do many of these Zoom and phone call meetings as possible. My family's even quarantined right now, and I'm not whining, I'm just letting you know I can't get up there. I don't have any business to attend to, but it's good for me to be there, see what's going on and, you know, helping out day-to-day things. Quarantine ends on Thursday for us, so I'll be trying to get up there next week to just at least drive through town on my way to another meeting, if anybody needs anything.
Okay.
That's really all I have right now. I was gonna just go on mute and listen for a while.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Jared?
No.
Nope? Okay, thanks, Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to 7A, first reading of the ordinance, city limit boundary description.
This is the description that was developed by Mr. Link after all of the annexations this year. He did provide a map as well. So I guess unless there's some questions or corrections that anybody saw, we can move on to first reading and then we'll schedule it for the second reading and approval.
Okay.
No questions or comments here.
One wish of the board. We need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Move to approve the, the of the first reading.
Clicking that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovindor.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're gonna launch the reports. Water, sewer.
Okay, last week we had interviews for our full-time city physician. And after the interviews, we had further discussion, and so tonight, I would like to make a motion that we make an offer to Zachary Peterson. He would be once approved, working three days a week, would be eligible for a single health plan, and we would be starting him at the same rate as our recent hire.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So and we have a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
There is no discussion. Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovindor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, and then we have street cemetery?
I have nothing at this time, Dave, unless you got.
No, we got all the storm drains done, sucked out, and then all the Christmas ornaments hung on Main Street and stuff, so we're pretty much right on pace for being ready for looking.
Knock on wood, no winter. Did you, Dan, did you and Jerry hear that? The storm drains, storm drains are all cleared out and tournament lights are hung up for Christmas. That's all that I have.
Okay. Finance, blessing, library?
So so the library here in town was, I guess, a one of four in the state here that got this got this award for, I guess, twenty nineteen. And it's a it's a excelling level award. Everyone over there is doing a great jobs. Very excited about this one.
Well, that's good to hear. Kudos to them. Pass that on.
You're welcome. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
On my report, all I have is we did meet with the forestry with Mike Fralick and the rest of the board, and just discussed the things that he's been doing this year, trees that he's been planting, taking down some of his vision for trees in that area by the dog park. And I think we're gonna meet again in January, February to set up our board. What do we have now? Was there four of us there?
Yeah.
Yeah, four of us. We are still looking for one more. But yeah, that was about it for our board. And that's all I have.
Nancy?
Yes.
If you, I'm sorry, I can hear you guys, but not real great. Did you say something about planting or taking down some trees by the dog park?
He was, he's been planting this summer, some fruit trees, some other trees that they'd like to see planted in Hazen, but people don't know what they look like, so he wanted to start to grow some to show people, you know, if they want a certain tree in their yard or in the boulevard, this is what they're gonna look like when they get larger. So.
Thank you.
And he has been applying for some grants to help pay for some of these items, so he's been keeping busy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We have no HCD.
Is Buster on the line?
Is Buster on the line?
I am here. I don't really have anything to report, other than the fact that we do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, our board, so.
Okay. And then Jerry, do you have anything for your report?
Just a couple things. I know I contacted you guys about the letter I would submit to the Hazen Star, the Beulah Beacon, that should run this week. Also, I've been in contact with the Beulah Chamber, or, sorry, local members over there, and Aaron Garben has submitted a letter to both boards. And Aaron is the medical director at Cold Country Community Health Center. And if you wouldn't mind, I did talk to him. I believe Kathy Kelch is gonna be reading it at their meeting, and if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna read this to you guys as well, please, and I will send a copy to Monty as well, and if you guys want our copy, we put it in your mailboxes. This will take a couple minutes, so bear with me, please. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Again, this is from Aaron Garben, medical director at Cold Country Community Health Center. To the communities of Beulah and Hazen, when I first came to Mercer County in nineteen ninety-nine, I was full of hope for the future. I had an unwavering passion for the healthcare in our community. Over the past twenty years, I've tried to do my part to work on improving the health and well-being of the patients in our county and in our state. This has meant collaboration with cities, counties, state entities, national partners, industries, local healthcare institutions, and our patients themselves. By working together, we have created a strong healthcare neighborhood. It is through this neighborhood of care that we have improved the quality of care in our patients and reduced costs as well. Unfortunately, your healthcare neighborhood is under attack. We have been seeing a surge in inspections due to COVID virus, the likes of which we have never seen before. Today, as I am drafting this letter, there are ten thousand four hundred eighty-six active coronavirus positive patients in North Dakota and a hundred and six, a hundred and six active Corona positive patients in Mercer County. We have lost five people to COVID since the pandemic began. The fourteen days rolling positive rates in Cockley Medical Centers and Cold Country Community Health Centers is plus thirty percent. We are in a fight for all of our lives. As a physician, I fight every day to try to wipe out disease and delay death. I have a great team that helps me do it. However, our team is also under attack. Each patient presenting to the hospital or to the clinic that is coronavirus positive places healthcare workers at risk. We have shortages of personal protective equipment, but use that, I think, I think it's about the PEL system, to try to link the map for reuse. We have staff who are out to the illness or quarantine. Cold Country, C, FMC, and KRCC all have struggled to continue this, to struggle to maintain service. We are not alone in being overwhelmed. Currently, healthcare access across the state or Dakota is limited to non-existence. If you or your loved one needs a higher level of care, we may get a bad embargo or billing on them. This is our hospital, our fault. At the Cockley Medical Center, we are unable to keep COVID positive patients. First, a COVID positive patient needs to be kept in a negative pressure environment. Well, if the Cockley Medical Center does have two end-of-pressure rooms, we would need to dedicate staff to the COVID unit. This prevents cross-contamination on non-COVID positive patients on the floor. We don't have enough staff to make this happen. Secondly, we do not have infectious disease doctors, critical care docs, or all of the treatments required to take care of patients with this condition. We therefore are managing the patients that we can, and those that need a higher level of care are being sent elsewhere. This is a tremendous burden on families in our community and on our healthcare system. We still have COVID or non-COVID patients in the hospital and our ER, continues to work diligently to manage any and all emergencies presenting to the hospital, COVID or not. The coronavirus surge has placed a significant burden on our ambulance service as well. Most of the COVID positive patients are being transferred by air ambulance and often to Fargo. We've struggled sending patients by ground ambulance, as we do not have our ambulance to out of the county for that length of time. We are also running very short of ambulance personnel. If more become ill or are quarantined, we may not even have ambulance service. We are all doing what we can to prevent it, but unfortunately, this is a reality. My staff and I have tried since the start of the pandemic to inform the public as to what we know to be true and give our advice as the prevention of this, the prevention of this disease. We have held numerous Facebook Live sessions in which we pleaded to people to, one, please wear a mask, two, socially distance, and three, wash your hands. Unfortunately, the individuals that are coming are not adhering to these simple suggestions. The holidays season is quickly approaching, and families are getting together and are going to add more fuel to this raging fire. I feel that I, I am honest and trustworthy. I want the best for everyone here today. If we work together, we can improve our situation, save lives. This is not about an "I." This is about "we." We need our neighbors, our family and our friends. We need to help our healthcare institutions. If I could ask for one thing in twenty years of service towards this community, please wear a mask, wash your hands, and socially distance. Please help us do what we may to continue to help you. Respectfully submitted, Aaron Garben, MD, Medical Director of Cold Country Community Healthcare. I think that can be a little tangential, the letter I wrote. And obviously, when I wrote mine on Friday morning, I did not know the governor was gonna come up with what he had to say, and neither did Aaron Garben. Aaron did say at the end, when he mentioned that he is trustworthy and that he is honest. I feel that was our entire medical service that we have. We are very fortunate to have what we have in Hazen and Mercer County. I think we all put our lives in their hands, one way or another, with different medical procedures and going to get checkups and whatnot. So I think we just kind of start listening close to these people. So I appreciate you taking, letting me read Aaron's letter, and that's all I have for the president's report.
Okay. We're gonna move on to correspondence. The two thousand twenty-one Visitor's Guide of the chamber.
In the past, we've done the inside cover of a letter from the president highlighting some of the things here in Hazen, and that it costs four hundred and fifty dollars if we wanna keep doing inside cover.
Is that the same cost, Lester?
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do we need to roll call? Roll call.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovindor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to old business, city fees.
As I said in the notes, sitting with some of the staff, we went over these fees and we're threw together the proposed amount in the green column. Again, this is just for your information at this point. If you wanna get back to us, we'll put it on the agenda and start to actually work on these next meetings. Some of these would require an ordinance change, and I haven't had a chance to visit with Pat, if we can do it as a bulk ordinance changer, if we have to do specifically a reading on each ordinance to change these fees. So we would end up with.
We'll look at that and see. Some of it depends on whether there are penalties involved.
Right, right. So I guess at this point, unless you have some recommendations or whatever, or get the recommendations back to us, we'll kind of just go with a lot ahead. And then we can always incorporate, you know, if we're gonna change them every year, or every other year, or whatever we wanna do there.
Right.
I guess I would like to see in preparation for our next meeting, if we add another column to that spreadsheet there, that just has an X, if you will, next to each one of the items that would in fact require an ordinance upaged, and then that will, that will help us start moving forward on those.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just keep that on the agenda for next time, for the next meeting? We can move on to assess our planning position?
Again, just.
Hey, can I, can I stop?
Yep.
Okay. So obviously, this is something that we have kind of been, we're saying about popping around since Shannon resigned. And Monty and I have discussed this numerous times about a direction to go with this, and I guess I'll have Monty speak also, but I think he's feeling a little more comfortable doing the position. And then kind of spreading some work or get some help from the other gals in the office. I also feel that if Monty does take on this, that there does need to be some some change in his compensation as well. I know he's already told us all, no, he does not want it, but I don't think that is fair. However, I know with our budget that we've passed here recently, I'm not sure how we could make that change, but anyhow, Monty, have you kind of visited, you know, your perception of the position, or how it could be built?
Well, as you said, yeah, I'm, after visiting with Ryan from Vanguard, I'm a little more comfortable, at least with that side of it. Obviously, if it isn't, if I am appointed, it would require schooling, the class two requires eighty hours of classroom training within two years of the appointment, so that would be something we would just have to schedule, the state-run classes, and forty hours of it is online classes, so that wouldn't be a real issue there. As far as compensation, the budget is approved, there's no changing it, so.
Sorry, Monty, good, Harry, what'd you say?
I said as far as compensation, you approved the budget, we're not changing it.
So, Monty, you had a question. How much, not just you, but the other two gals, have they pitched in Apple time? Or what?
With regard to just.
Well, yeah, with regards to if next year's budget, we decide to do something with you, I mean, is it worthy enough? I don't know how much the other two gals do to help you out with that.
Basically, they would be asked to do a little more of the other stuff as far as tracking the landfill stuff that I do right now, and, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, Tammy already took over the clerk of court, so. And Angie's doing a lot, over the summer, she does a lot of the park board stuff, so that I don't have to worry about that. I just basically do the reports at the end of the month and attend their meetings, so. They, they, they've picked up slack all, all around already, so.
And they're not spending more time at the office?
No, no. It's still all work that we can get done in a normal workday.
Monty, are the job descriptions for yourself and the, and the two gals, are they granular enough to where we would have to? If, if you're offloading some of the, the normal activities to, to take on some of these added responsibilities, do, do we need to modify the job descriptions to account for those changes in practice?
We possibly would have to, you know. We were always told that it always falls under another duties as a sign, but it might be a good idea to look at them a little more closer.
Now, if you all recall, one of the reasons why we're doing this, we're trying to be a little bit more fiscally responsible. Since we have less income, you know, this is a good way for us to look at, uh, savings, um, other, preparing another position. However, I think even as the winter, spring, and summer come and go, um, before we have our next budget section, we probably have some good input from Monty and the ladies if, if this, if this continues or if we do actually have to hire someone. So it'll be kind of an experimental, um, time for the next nine, ten months, well, I believe.
Any other discussion on the assessor planner position? If not, we're gonna move on to new business? Tire bids?
Nancy?
Yes.
So, Monty, do we need to have, do we need to have an official motion to do this? Are we out of compliance with the state at all, or are we?
Not at this point, not at this point. The county is still assisting us in doing those things. I, actually, it would be their responsibility if we didn't have anybody. It was just a matter of how we wanted to better serve our residents than having the county do it. So, no, we're not compliant at this point, but if you do formally appoint, then we start keeping track of getting the certification within the required time.
Okay, thank you. So we, so we would not have to worry about the certification and the training and stuff until we formally make a, a decision that this here is, uh, gonna be permanent?
Yeah, as, as far as somebody on our staff doing it, obviously, we can't just keep going down the road with just kind of kicking it toward the county because that's not fair to them either.
So, so what kind of buffer of time do we have on that? When do we have to pull the trigger? Is this something that we write out this fiscal year? Or is it something that within the next couple of meetings, we need to make a formal decision?
Uh, I think if you have, your best bet would be to have something formal by the first of the year. Assessments, valuations are certified as of February first, so we'd still be relying pretty heavily on the county, but.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on to tire bids.
Uh, paid quotes from several of the local vendors as far as tires. Actually, this is something that, uh, Mr. Block looked at when he started with the busing out there because he was in charge of the vehicles for his previous employer. And he said there's two buses out there that really need tires, so we're looking at six tires for each. Uh, his recommendation, I'm trying to remember my notes, were the Michelin, which is a little more expensive, or the Bridgestone, but as I said in the notes, he wasn't familiar with that Salem tire, which is quite a bit less expensive. The difference is, some of these were quoted as fourteen ply, which are currently on the bus, and some were quoted as twelve ply. There is no requirement. Uh, visiting with people at the state, they said a twelve ply is just as good. There's not a lot of miles on these. Our two thousand thirteen bus only has fifty thousand miles on it, so.
So then on the notes, there's also, I think, a Firestone, I think it's mandated, it's a fourteen ply.
Yeah, they did have that, uh. Jim was just talking from his own experience, he hasn't had very good luck with those Firestone tires, using them on his personal vehicles.
I don't know, Dave has any.
I guess I never, I've never seen it in the paper, so I don't know if the Michelin is a good tire.
You said we'd be looking at six total, or?
Yes, no, six for each bus, it'd be twelve total tires. And basically, it comes down to two thousand forty-nine for each bus for the Michelin tires. And, and change.
Move to approve, uh, of the purchase of the, uh, of the, of the, uh, of the Michelin tires for, uh, for the buses.
That's, wrong, Fitterer then.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second. We have a second by Jason. Any discussion? They have none, roll call?
We, if we wanted, if we wanted six, six tires for each, how come everybody was quoting just four?
Well, they're, they, uh, Fitterer was actually quoting drive tires and steer tires, and they're not going to go with the set, different tires. They're gonna get, get them all as the same style drive tires, even for the steer tires, because getting on some of these icy streets and stuff, that, it was recommended that we go with the actual drive tires, even on the front end, for a little better traction.
I'm not, I'm not sure that answered my question. When I look at Fitterer's quotes here, the quantities are for.
Yeah, I didn't include all of them, Dan, I'm sorry, because he did quote drive tires under the Michelin brand as well, at a cost that for two of them, at a cost of six hundred dollars.
So is it, so Dan saved four tires, but on a bus, there's six, there's six tires. Correct, Dan, what, what you're getting at?
That's, that's what I'm wondering, so when, when I hear Casey make a motion to approve that we're moving forward with, with the Michelin on that motion, I guess I'm just curious what, what we're looking at in terms of dollars for, you're talking two buses, six, six players each, correct?
Correct. So it, it was quoted for the Michelins from Fitterer at twelve hundred and ten dollars for four of them. They just extrapolated that out for six, which would be two thousand forty-nine dollars for each bus.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was looking for.
Any other discussion?
And this one's, you mentioned recommend.
Oh, I, I'm sorry I'm not there this evening, it's hard for me to hear, I'm not sure if my phone or, it's just because I'm old, but, um. So when I'm looking at the first, I'm saying, thanks, Dan. When I look at the bad tire from, the Michelin tire from, uh, Fitterer, it's three hundred and two dollars seventy-four cents a piece. So that shows at the bottom a total of thirteen hundred, so we need six, so that goes from, it's eighteen twelve, then another hundred and some for labor. So it's over two thousand dollars, but if we look to bottom, down at the hand cooked tire by Senex, they are bidding six tires.
Yes, they did.
So I, I guess I've, I don't feel like, it was part of the discussion I didn't hear, I'm sorry, but I don't feel like we're getting apple to apple.
Basically, they're all the same tire, just different brands.
So the unit cost is the same regardless if we get four, or if we get six, right?
Right.
We just didn't get an updated quote for six. So the unit cost.
From Fitterer.
Yeah. So the unit cost per tire is the same. What's the hand cooked unit cost?
Two ninety-eight.
And Michelin's are?
Three oh two.
And I, I'd know from experience, Michelin's are a higher priced tire. I don't think I would recommend putting hand cooked tires on a transport bus, to be honest. Nothing against Senex or Hand Cooks, because I got them on my wife's vehicle, but I just, I, I'm personally more comfortable with a Michelin tire on a bigger transport vehicle or truck, if you will. So, I don't know if that helps answer your question, Harry, or not?
Um, yeah, I guess, when I look at the Firestone or two fifty-eight, the.
Right, and you said.
I, yeah, that's my question, thank you.
I think the price is the, from the.
Yeah, and obviously, we could have, for the cheap one, it's fifteen hundred dollars for six of them too, but is it as good a tire?
Well, that's what, that, that's my thing is, Jerry and Monty. That old saying, you kind of get what you pay for, but I'm not saying either one is a good or bad tire. I just, I personally feel that a Michelin tire is better suited for that, so. I understand, Jerry, you're, we're looking at cost too, and I, I get that. So, in the long run, I think we're.
Well, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we go with the cheapest tire. But you know, the Firestone is a fourteen ply to the two fifty-eight tire. And, and would you, what's your, what's your opinion, or you guys in the room, that it's not better, you, Dave, Casey, uh, is the, is the Firestone adequate? And if so, we're saving eight hundred bucks, I do go with that, yes, but.
Well, I mean, I would say, I guess, on a, you know, on a vehicle that's not gonna see all that many, all that many, I guess, all that many, I guess, miles on it, you know, I mean, it's probably gonna not get worn out before it gets, uh, weather checked maybe, but. But then too, I guess, uh, you know, I guess the comment was made, you know, about the Firestones maybe aren't as, aren't as good of a tire, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one, who, who brought up the tire situation again?
Jim Block.
He must be a new bus driver?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. We're gonna do a roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Orenour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, random drug testing program for two thousand twenty-one.
The League of Cities is again working with Global Safety Network out of Grand Forks. We've basically been, ever since I started, we've always worked with the League of Cities Consortium for our random drug testing. Uh, our cost, as I said in the notes, is seventy dollars per safety sensitive physician. We have fourteen of them, we include law enforcement. Uh, anybody with a CDL, water, wastewater, and it's anybody operating heavy equipment even, are basically considered safety sensitive according to the League of Cities and referring to the Fourth Amendment.
So, Monty, question, with, with that program, do we, what is the algorithm? Is it something within the city? Uh, do we stipulate that we're gonna perform one or two randoms per month, per quarter? Uh, how does that whole process work?
They do a quarterly draw. Uh, the CDL and non-VOT are drawn from the full pool. The transit are drawn, look as, basically as our own group so that we get our testing requirements for those drivers' licenses. We generally have.
Is that, is that facilitated by the League of Cities, or, or do we do that within the city and then we just use that service?
No, it's, it's all done, the, uh, Global Safety Network does all the draws and all of that, reporting to us.
So do we need a motion to, uh, participate, or?
Yeah, because it, it does have an agreement.
It does have a.
This is a continuation of a service that's been offered to us in the past, and we've participated in, correct?
Correct.
I make a motion that we move forward with the agreement noted for the twenty twenty-one calendar year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Heller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Orenour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, I don't see grant finder program for twenty twenty-one.
Another service provided by the League of Cities, uh. Basically, I get an email every morning, or three, actually, three emails every morning with different grant opportunities nationwide. We go through them, uh, if there's something that relates to library, I send it to Sienna. If there's something related to law enforcement or corrections, I send it to the police department, and we go through them and just pick out stuff that actually pertains to us that we think will be helpful to us, and and it's a seventy-five dollars a year to get the service. They do offer, it would cost more, but they do offer assistance if we are going after a grant where they would help us write it, but we haven't relied on that yet, though. Most of the time between Buster and Atwinet and, and my office, we can come up with a pretty good grant application and narrative if we need one.
And we've had this service?
Yeah, we've been using it for three years.
Correct.
Why is there, I guess, a limit on the number of?
Uh, the, the League of Cities only bought so many licenses for the program, so, yeah, that's why it's first come, first served.
I tell you, we jump on it. I'll make a motion that we subscribe to the Grant Finder Program for twenty twenty-one at the amount of seventy-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Heller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Orenour.
Aye.
Motion carried. It's on to the bills.
Monty, that, those bills, did you email us? Was that an addition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those two, that's a three extra ones, yeah.
Motion be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills? If not, roll call?
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Mo...
Aye.
Orenour.
Aye.
Motion carried. If there's no other business, meeting adjourned.